Good morning, and welcome to the April 1 Committee of the whole meeting, for which I'm now going to call to order. Madam Clerk, for the record of this meeting, please note that Mayor Haxton is absent with notice, and that in the mayor's absence, I, Councilor Crone, will be as acting mayor and will chair today's meetings. I'll then move on to declarations of interest. Do any members of committee have any declarations of interest? Seeing none, I will move on to our land acknowledgement statement. The town of East Goulunbury recognizes and acknowledges the lands originally used and occupied by the First Peoples of the Williams Treaty's First Nations and other indigenous peoples, and on behalf of council, I thank them for sharing this land. We also acknowledge the Chipewas of Georgina Islands First Nation as EG's first, closest First Nation community, and recognize the unique relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and we join them in these responsibilities. I'll now move on to community announcements, and on behalf of Mayor Haxton, I want to remind everyone about the run for South Lake Health. Mayor Haxton is the team EG captain, and we are currently leading the fundraising for the mayor's challenge, so let's keep the donations going. I encourage staff and public to join Team EG, and if you can, and donate. South Lake is an important part of our community. As well, I would like to thank Town Cruise and members of Hydro One for their efforts in cleaning up the mess that we had over the weekend with the ice storm and restoring power. I know it's been a long haul. Appreciate everyone's patience. Rest of committee, Councilor Crowthers, you have an announcement to make. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Yesterday was the International Transgender Day of Visibility, an annual event dedicated to celebrate transgender, two-spirit, and gender diverse people resisting transphobia and promoting inclusion. The first transgender day of visibility was held in 2009, created by transgender activist Rachel Crandall Crocker. Visibility can be a powerful way to raise awareness about the trans community. Since the International Transgender Day of Visibility was created, advocates have also called for moving beyond visibility to materially supporting trans people and challenge structural forms of oppression that the community faces. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Councilor Leahy, please go ahead.
Thank you very much through you, Acting Mayor Crone. On Saturday, April 19, there is the annual East Goulunbury Easter Bunny Hike will be taking place from 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. at the Ross Family Complex in Mount Albert, and it's always a great day out searching for Easter eggs, so we welcome everyone to join that activity. Thank you.
Anywhere, Councilor Roy DiClemente, please go ahead.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank the members of the library staff and members of committee, and of course, members of the community who came to the Holland Landing branch of the East Goulunbury Public Library to celebrate their 50th birthday party. I was hesitant to get near that 50 sign, because I didn't want to be associated with that number, but regardless, it was an absolutely incredible day, and I think all of us attended, and I just wanted to send a shout out to the staff who put a good party together. And then I'm just going to slip into and reiterate, slip into my old role as team captain of Team EG for the run for South Lake and just put another plug in for that. We're currently sitting at $36,600 for that run. I think it's important that we want to send a signal to the community and to the hospital that we have their back and that we are here to fundraise for them. We only have eight members on the team right now, so as former Councilor Persacini used to say, your money or your wallet or your feet, either one, are most welcome. So I just wanted to send another shout out that we're looking for new members and, of course, appreciate any bit of support that we can get. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Seeing none, move on, and just before we move to deputations, I just want to remind committee today, we have a very packed agenda, so I would ask for your indulgence. Let's keep our questions focused and make sure that we stay on target with what we're talking about, and let's continue to do the people's work here today. So, moving on to deputations, I would like to call upon Tyler McNaughton, who is making a deputation to the committee regarding a memorandum of understanding between Georgina Trail Rider Snowmobile Club and the town of East Goulunbury. Welcome, Mr. McNaughton. Please go ahead. The floor is yours.
Good morning, council. Thank you for having me today. Can everyone hear me okay? Excellent. I'd like to start off by saying I have been with the Georgina Trail Riders for about 10 years, and unfortunately, we've never had this formal agreement in place with York Region, or sure with East Goulunbury, but we have been, the trail has been active, so I'd like to try and, I'm asking today, to have the memorandum of understanding reviewed by your teams and hopefully approved. If there's, basically, it pertains to a corridor we use along Boat Road that falls Boat Road from the bottom of Cook's Bay through over past Raven Shoe, to approach past 48, and I know you do a bylaw that permits snowmobiles on municipal owned land, so I know there's a concern there, but essentially, yeah, thanks for showing the map. This is the existing trail as we have it set up. It's mostly just road allowances that I'm asking for the memorandum to reflect upon. Second concession down to Boat Road is the area number one. Number two is a small hydro corridor. Three and four are both unassumed road allowances, I guess, I assume would be Boat Road if it did go through. So I don't really know, procedurally, I've never really been in this position, so please, if you have any questions for me, please bring them to me. But I'm hoping we can have this reviewed. The snowmobile club is at jeopardy of losing all of our trails because of our small number of trail. Like, we're down to about, with York Region, East Goulunbury, and Georgina lands, we're down to about 40 kilometers total, where we used to have close to 100. This past season, we only had about 12 kilometers we were able to groom and utilize because of some missing agreements. And we still do have quite a good volunteer base and a good user base. I think Georgina sold about 200 permits, which kind of represents about 200 active snowmobilers throughout Georgina, East Goulunbury, and over 5,000 in our district, which includes Orangeville, Alston, Hillsburg, Dufferin, and then Georgina, so it's a great link for us to get to the lake and connect to our trail system.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tyler. Could I have a mover for this, please? Councilor Leahy. Are there any questions for our presenter? Councilor Leahy, please go ahead.
Thank you very much through you, Acting Mayor Crone. I have a question for Mr. McNaughton. Thank you very much for your presentation. I look at this as an opportunity, potentially for economic development within East Goulunbury as well. But my first question was, are you a member of the Ontario Federation of Snowmobile Clubs?
Mr. McNaught?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Georgina is a member in good standing with the OFSC. Our club has been around for 50 years, and as for economic impact, they did a study, OFSC did a study, and I believe they reported about $6 billion economic impact across the province for 2023. I believe that was the last study they did.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I may make a follow-up suggestion. I'm very supportive of this initiative to have an agreement with East Goulunbury, because I think that there is tremendous opportunities for tourism and for supporting local businesses, whether it be cafes, or restaurants, or motels, et cetera, throughout the community. So will that be part of the, maybe this is a question for staff, will that be part of the memorandum of understanding, any exploration of potential tourism or economic development opportunities?
Who from staff would like to tackle that one? Mr. Velcich?
Mr. Chairman, my understanding is that the routes have been used traditionally on a more informal basis, so I'm not aware that this is a new route being established. I may be wrong, but I, so in terms of opportunities for tourism and restaurants and motels, that would be probably part of a broader economic development conversation. I'm not sure specifically related to the request that's in front of us today, but I think that would fit in, not only to this, but to sort of a broader discussion about tourism opportunities in EG.
Okay. Councilor Crowthers, then Councilor Foster.
Thank you. I'm wondering if we can put up the map again, and if you can just help me understand a little bit better what is all on the map. So I see the areas that you're asking for memorandum of understanding on, but what is the green area, and why are you not asking for permission to go all the way through? Why just these areas?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The green areas represent private farmlands that we have access to from the, and permission from the owners. The road crossings are covered by our Motorized Snow Vehicle Act, so it's only really the unassumed road allowances that remain for where we need the EG's permission to use.
Okay, so three and four are the unassumed road allowances, two is the hydro corridor, and one, though, I thought you said was road. Is that unassumed there, number one?
It's a road allowance as well, unassumed road allowance, yes.
It's unassumed, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, and it's good to see Mr. McNaughton, your group here, looking to kind of formalize this. When I, as a retired snowmobiler, let's put it that way, I look at this route, and it's certainly familiar to me from many years of running that area. I think I'd like to make sure that today, we're not simply receiving this presentation, but we actually send it to staff to give us an idea of the protocol to amend the bylaw or how we go about doing that and making this memorandum of understanding work for this group. It's said that there is no group in Holland Landing anymore, but again, everything's kind of crunching in there, but yeah, this, I think this is something that we need to do. Thank you.
Okay, so, Councilor Leahy, this is your motion. Are you okay to refer this to staff for review and with the mind to approving?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you capture that? Are there any other questions for Mr. McNaughton? Seeing none, then I will call a vote. It's moved by Councilor Leahy. All those in favor? And it is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. McNaughton, and we will be in touch.
Thank you very much.
All right. Take care. All right. Moving on to item F, presentations. We have none at this time, and that takes us to item G, Development Services, and I'm going to hand the chair over to Councilor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three items on our prepared agenda today. The first one is a presentation and memorandum regarding our planning application status list. Before I hand it over to Mr. Krubnik, may I have someone to move receipt, please? Moved by Councilor Crone, thank you. Mr. Krubnik, would you care to present the first item, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This first item is Planning Application Status Update. We try to provide it annually to council to give them an idea of what is going on within our community and what has come forward in the previous year as well, in 2024. So this is an annual, this is a summary of development application. You will see that there are a number of appendix items that are, hopefully, council finds very useful. a number of appendix items that are, hopefully, council finds very useful. They tell you by your words what is presently active and what has also come into staff in the 2024 calendar year. I will also briefly take council's attention to page five of the memo, just to illustrate that you will see that on the planning side, our planning team is fairly busy with consistent activity with pre-consultation reviews, still being relatively high compared to a couple of years back, and being fairly consistent with last year, as well as the total applications that have been submitted in the last calendar year. And you will see that approximately, there is, there was a significant uptick in the development applications completed in 2024. And that's a good news for us. And I think it's a reflection of us staffing up in the 2023 calendar year and getting some of our business completed. I have Victoria Moore with me here today, manager of planning, who will be giving council a brief presentation on this memo.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, as Mr. Krubnik mentioned, I am here today to present our annual planning application status memo. So this is an annual memo that began in 2020 to provide an update to council on the planning activity at the end of each calendar year. And as you're aware, in 2023, there were a number of legislative changes that took place, including the delegation of site plan approvals to staff. So as a result of that, the planning branch began preparing intro memos to council to advise of new site plan applications made to the planning branch. And this annual planning application status update memo supplements those intro memos to keep council informed about the progress made on those site plan applications, as well as all planning applications processed through the planning department. Next slide, please. So I first just want to highlight some of the key planning branch metrics reported in 2024. So we had a total of 82 reports, memos, and presentations that were presented to council. This includes those intro memos I mentioned previously, public meeting memos, as well as recommendation reports, among other things. We also executed 11 site plan agreements in 2024. A couple notable agreements include the Queensville Public School Site Plan Agreement on Walter English Drive, and the Metro Scholastic Development at Green Lane and 404, which you'll see is currently under construction. We also executed four subdivision agreements in 2024, and these were mostly a result of additional allocation obtained through York Region's SDIP program. But also, a notable application was the Queensville Phase Five Development, which was executed in 2024, and it was registered earlier this year. And that development will facilitate the construction of 273 single detached dwelling units and 81 townhouse units. So in 2024, we also managed and responded to a total of 3,299 inquiries, which included over 2,100 email inquiries, 777 phone inquiries, and over 400 in-person inquiries at the planning counter. So we manage those inquiries by having a rotating schedule in the planning branch. So each day, a planner is responsible, being the primary contact to deal with those inquiries. And then we always have a secondary planner available as well to assist, depending on the volume. Also, just to note that we are working on some strategies to improve our website content to ensure that information relevant to some of the most common inquiries that we receive are available online, to minimize the need for people to pick up the phone and speak to an actual planner to have their questions addressed. So one example of this is that we introduced the interactive zoning maps on the town's webpage. So this allows people to go online and look up their own zoning. Not all residents are familiar with this tool or know how to use it, so we still do receive a number of zoning inquiries. But we found this tool has been helpful for those who frequently interact with our zoning bylaws, such as realtors and planning consultants. Also to highlight, we had a total of 35 HAC Heritage Advisory Committee agenda items for this past year, and that includes a variety of removal requests, renovation proposals, and general heritage-related matters. We also facilitated a total of 40 pre-consultation meetings and 32 committee of adjustment applications. And then the final metric that I want to point to is that we completed in 2024 a total of 24 active planning applications. So many of these had been active for over two years, and some of them dated back to 2018. So an examples of a few that were completed is the Sharon Vit, Leslie Street and Manor Hampton. The official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment applications were approved, and they have since submitted their site plan application. Also, the Welland Development zoning bylaw amendment and subdivision application at Green Lane and Second Concession, and two official plan amendments west of Young Street for Beachway and Sundial, as well as the South Sharon Developments Mixed Use Plaza at Green Lane and Morrell. So over the next few slides, I will go over at a high level, ward by ward, each of the new applications that were received in 2024, and highlight some of those ongoing applications. Next slide, please. So in Ward One, some new applications that were received included, as mentioned previously, the Sundial and Beachway official plan amendments. So those were both submitted and approved in 2024 and have since been closed. There was also an official plan amendment for Highway 11 and Crimson King Way. This is a proposed employment development. We also have, this is on our public meeting agenda for this afternoon, a ZBA application for 19820 Holland Landing Road, and that's a proposed employment commercial development. And then finally, a site plan application for 18182 Young Street, and that's proposal to convert the existing Costco into a business center. Next slide, please. In terms of active applications, we're still actively working on the TriCap Properties Development at Mount Albert and Second Concession. We're actively working with them to execute their subdivision agreement and register their plan for hopefully this year. At 464 Mount Albert Road, we have a subdivision and site plan application, and we are coming close to being able to bring a recommendation report to council on that one. That will likely take place at some time this year. Another application that's currently under review is for 291 Mount Albert Road, and that's a subdivision and zoning bylaw amendment application for multi-residential development. And then finally, there's the Holland Park or Holland Hope application, which was approved by the OLT in 2024, but requires servicing allocation to proceed. Next slide, please. Now getting into Ward Two. So we received a new official plan amendment application for 18642 Leslie Street. This is a multi-residential development that also proposes to preserve and repurpose the existing heritage building on the site. We have a proposed York Region Catholic school location at 235 Murray Leonard Lane, and then a proposed Toyota dealership at 1656 Green Lane East. Next slide, please. Then in terms of active applications, in 2024, we had the Queensville Phase Five application. As I mentioned previously, that's now been completed. We also have a site plan application for Acorn Developments on Leslie Street. The ZBA for this application was approved in 2024, and we're now working through a site plan agreement and draft plan revision. There's also a site plan application for 18960 Leslie Street. This is a proposed medical office right beside the Sharon Temple. This has been ongoing for a few years, and we're expecting it to be approved shortly. Finally, we have one application in Ward Two that's been appealed to the OLT. That's for Jeffrey Crescent and Leslie Street, and that is a proposed multi-residential development. And next slide, please. So in Ward Three, we received a new zoning bylaw amendment and subdivision application for Phase Two of the Oxford Developments. So that's the eastern portion of the property. We also received a site plan application for 25 Page Wood Court. So that's within the Oscar subdivision off Woodbine. A site plan application for 50 Garfield Wright. That's the Convertus Biofuel application. And then finally, 2156 Queensville Side Road, and that's the relocation of the Mans Steel operation to EG. Next slide, please. And then in terms of active applications, we have a ZBA and subdivision application that was made by Rice Group. And this is a residential subdivision for 29 units. This was approved by what was formerly the LPAT, now the OLT. And the applicants are currently working to address their draft plan conditions, and that will be dependent on servicing allocation as well. We also have an application at 22044 Highway 48, a site plan application for a proposed self-storage facility that is pending approval currently. And then finally, we have two applications on Princess Street. One is for a proposed expansion to a contractor yard, and the agreement is underway for that development. And then finally, the expansion to the home hardware operation. So we are working through the final stages towards approval on that one. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned previously, we are actively working to make some improvements to our active applications website, with the goal of ensuring that regular updates are completed as applications progress, and to ensure that all relevant information is available to the public, so that they can access information online and don't need to call or email to receive that information. Just to note, there are some AODA challenges associated with putting some information online, so we are working through those challenges currently, but hope to be able to put as much information as possible on our website. Next slide, please. And then just a link to the active applications website for more information on anything, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Wow, I'm a little dizzy. Thank you, Ms. Moore. So, members of committee, any questions for Ms. Moore? Go ahead, Counselor Johns.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, one, I just want to lead with a thank you. I, as you called out, Madam Chair, so whoa, I was a little bit dizzy. There's a lot going on, and I, it's just very impressive to hear that rundown. I think what is most impressive for me is the, seeing the shift in the schools, offices, medical offices, businesses. And I think that for the longest time, it was all about residential and houses. And I was buoyed by the fact that when I was reviewing this in preparation for today, just seeing how many non-res opportunities that are coming to life. I think that from this side of the table of the things that we can control when it comes to servicing and whatnot, and going down the list, I, I think that while the opportunities that are necessarily immediately in front of us, I would love the opportunity for us to find a way to advance diversity in housing options that are kind of non-traditional to East Goulunbury, to make sure that attainable is something for folks. And I just think that the opportunity to move that forward where we can is important, because we see schools, medical offices, businesses, but we don't see the outside of the traditional subdivision home model necessarily coming to fruition. And I'm hoping that we can move that forward. And I would even go as far as is that identifying applications that we can help move, and even getting sunset clauses on them. So if, if folks can use it, they will. And if they can't use it, we can take it back, and we can look to move other, other options forward. And so those are my comments. I just want to finish how I started. Thank you again. It's impressive work. So sincerely, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johns. Counselor Cruthers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. And I echo how impressive it is. And on the slide where you talked about 3,299 incoming inquiries, that's a lot. And I'm wondering if you can put some context for us. Are these residents asking for, for making inquiries, or are these mainly developers? Or what's the sort of split there?
Through you, Madam Chair. I would say it's mostly residents. Oftentimes, I mean, that's just tracking the number of emails that come in through our planning emails. So sometimes they are diverted to other departments. But for the most part, it is residents asking some sort of planning or development-related questions, or looking to, I guess, a smaller developer looking to kind of start a project and looking for some direction on how to begin.
Excellent. I'm wondering if there's a way for us to provide some sort of checklist for residents who are looking to do something that's a little more simple, so that they don't have to go into planning over and over again, trying to figure out what the path they need. Someone, just wondering if we can provide more tools that might help cut down on some of those inquiries, if there's tools who are available on the website. And just one more question, or one more suggestion, if I may. There's a lot happening here, and I could spend all day asking questions about each one of these. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to maybe set up quarterly meetings with each ward, where we can dive down a little deeper into the upcoming projects and what's happening, because it is a lot of the questions that we get. What's happening with this? What's happening with that? And to have it in a more informal setting, where we can have a lot of back and forth and get more deeply into what's happening, I think I would really appreciate that. I'm not sure if my colleagues would as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. I think for me, it's not so much what's happening, because we know what happens when it comes to council. It's the conversations that take place in those pre-consultation meetings. Before you have an active application, our staff often have a finger on the pulse of who's buying what, who's interested in what. And, and we end up, you're spending a lot of time in those meetings, and then inevitably, they come to us and want to have those sorts of meetings with us as well. And I think having that team, team approach to, to that preliminary conversation can often head off some of the challenges we face here in the chambers. Counselor Leahy, I think I saw your hand. Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. So I'm following up with a few points that have been raised, because I, I had them in mind as well. And the first is the educational component. And I have found that interactive tool that you introduced in 2024 very helpful for me as a counselor, answering residents' questions. But I think further educational promotional opportunities need to be followed through with, because I think that if, if the general public was more aware too, then, then things wouldn't take them necessarily by surprise when they appear on an agenda for, for council meetings. And with regard to communicating with individual wards, I absolutely agree that I would like to see and have more opportunities earlier on in the conversations to be involved, but not necessarily on a ward-by-ward basis. But because all counselors are serving all of East Goulunbury, and we all have an equal vote on these plans when they come to council, I think that all, all of the ward counselors should have an opportunity to be aware of what, what is in the works, and in terms of what the planning is. And so those are the suggestions I'd like to make. But I'd like to thank you for the, the maps, because visually, it really helps with comprehension, both in the council chambers, as well as for the residents at large, that we have access to these maps. And maybe, rather than it being an annual update, I might make the suggestion that perhaps it's a, it's every, it's twice a year, every six months, because so much is happening on such, in such a fast pace, that I think we would all benefit from having more than just one update per year. Those are just my suggestions and my observations. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Counselor Crone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to our presenter, I appreciate the, the volume of detail you've provided. This is, this is great. Lot of, lot of stuff going on. I'd like to echo the words of my colleague, Counselor Johns. I am glad to see a lot of the, what I'll call, economic development going on with non-residential. This is so important for us to get, to lessen our dependency on the residential tax base. And so, keep going with that. I, I will lend my, my voice to, I like the idea of having a review, and I would say not just by ward, because I get asked questions all the time about development that's going on in other wards. And yeah, so I think it would be beneficial if we had a, an overview of the entire town. The stats that you gave out were impressive. I know we have a, we've been implementing a customer relationship management tool. Do we track if someone comes in with an inquiry? If, you know, I think if it's just a one-off email, I wouldn't expect that we, we track too much about that. But do we, how do we track something that over the lifespan of, of, say, an application? But do we, how do we track something that, over the lifespan of, say, an application? Is that all done within the CRM? Or is there another tool that you folks are using to follow an application on its journey from start to finish? Just curious.
Through you, Madam Chair. So we don't currently have any formal technical process for managing those types of inquiries. We really, the inquiry count is really just a count of how many emails are directed through the planning email, but in terms of individual application, kind of correspondence back and forth, that's not something that we're currently tracking in our metrics, but we can look into that in future if that's interesting.
Yeah, I would, you know, coming from the insurance industry, we had, through you, Madam Chair, to our presenter, we had metrics coming out of our ears, and it's, sometimes it's burdensome to have too much, but you could do a lot with the metrics. But if you're going to track them, you need to do something with them at the end of the day as well. So happy to chat about that offline. My last question, Madam Chair, through you. You mentioned the servicing allocation in Ward 3. It's on a different system than the rest of the town. It's currently unavailable. Do we have a timeline of when it may be ready?
I think that's a Mr. Molinari question.
Yeah, maybe. Maybe.
Through you, Madam Chair. That is still in the works. It's in design. We expect sometime in the next, I think it was 2028, 2029 is the current timeframe for that. But if it's different, then I'll get back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Valtchich, you indicated you wanted to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that, just for clarity, we do have an applicant tracking system through CityView, so we do track applications, so-called cradle-to-grave. There is opportunities for us to enhance the functionality and improve the processes there, which is one of the continuous improvement sort of areas that's already been identified. I just didn't want to leave the impression that we don't have applicant-tracking software. We do, but I think there's definitely, as Ms. Moore has said, opportunities for us to enhance that and then get better sort of analytics and data out of that, which I think council would find very helpful. And I also want to mention that we're working on sort of a more comprehensive service strategy as well, which is somewhat overarching, that covers all of the services that we provide, and that's happening through Director Lee. And so we'll be coming back with something on that as well. So all these pieces will sort of end up merging together as we continue to refine our processes and improve services wherever we can.
Thank you. I think the important thing to note here is that there's a fine line between creating tools and self-serve options like interactive zoning maps and those sorts of things and resources online, and the professional expertise that our staff in planning have. And so you can't, if you try to give people too much information to serve themselves, they may not understand the nuances of what their inquiry are. And for me, it's important that we have the resources, the professional resources, to be able to address those inquiries. And the good news is that people are asking the questions instead of doing something first and then apologizing later. Councilor Foster, please go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Not to push this any further, but just to go a little bit, I guess, to lend my support to the updates that we may get, whether it be twice a year or quarterly meetings that have been suggested or however it works out. But I think just an example of the kind of things that we get thrown at us, and I'm sure you do too. There's a site in Ward 1 that we spent considerable time a couple of years ago here in council with site plan agreement and ready to go. Since that time, someone has moved into the building, spent significant money to renovate the building that is there, and yet that original site plan agreement is still on our site. And I get questioned a lot about why is it there if nothing's happening, or how long does it take for it to leave the site or whatever? So those are the types of questions that we get. I don't know if that helps you or not with the updates. I can certainly ask you questions later if we need to. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor. Oh, Ms. Gandhi, I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I just want to point out a couple of things. First of all, our customer relationship management software that was introduced to the town just a couple of years ago does now track all calls that come into development services. So in the past, we weren't recording every phone call that came in. We are able to tell by, even by ward, what calls are coming in by what department. And there's an opportunity to integrate, well, not integrate yet, but we're looking towards doing that. CA Ovaltchich mentioned the service experience strategy, which will help to define exactly what that end-to-end service will look like. And the other point I wanted to just mention is we are going to be introducing an IT strategy, which will hopefully give us a much broader bird's-eye view of how the systems integrate with each other, and our desire to have all of our systems integrate so that you can actually speak to one person and get all of the answers. So I just wanted to make those points. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gandhi. Anything further? I just wanted to add, you know, the fact is that there are some very, very favorable statistics here, and the dramatic number of completed applications has really climbed, and I want to commend the team for their hard work. And I think for me, what this does is it also sets the stage for that future readiness so that while we acknowledge the real estate market may or may not be as strong as we would like, what this does is having these planning approvals in place allows us to be shovel-ready and have those properties be shovel-ready, and that pulls, allows them to pull building permits when they're ready. And so, you know, doing our part towards the housing targets and towards diversification of our tax base and economic development is a really important step, and this is showing that things are moving in the right direction. And so I just wanted to put maybe a cherry on the top of that sundae. So I have a motion from Councilor Crone that we move it, and I think there was some desire for committee to see some individual meetings sort of offline to kind of give the lay of the land on a more informal basis as direction as well. Okay? Seeing no further questions, may I, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Moore. Next item on our agenda is Planning Branch Report DS 2025-05, Removing the Holding Provision on Kerbal Phase 3C. The motion here is that we enact a bylaw to remove the holding symbol from the subject lands as outlined in the bylaw included as an appendix to the report. I believe this is just adding 18 units to an already-approved subdivision. May I have a mover, please? Councilor Foster. Mr. Krupnik, anything further to add to your report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, nothing further to really add, but again, another good news story about moving units and development forward, although being 18 units, you know, it's adding to what we are anticipating will come forward in the near future. Thank you.
Members of committee, any questions? Councilor Johns, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. When I was reading the report and the nuance of the words, I just wanted clarity on. So the allocation on that 18 was confirmed with the region. So is that 18 coming from our reserve, or is that 18 already approved? Or like, I didn't quite understand the nuance of what the report said. Just looking for clarity on that.
Can you clarify, Mr. Krupnik, please?
Through you, Madam Chair. So that 18 has been allocated to this development, but you are correct, Counselor, in that it was provided to the town through the ESTIP program, the Sustainable Development Incentive Program we do have, or the region does have to, typically, it bonuses out at 20% maximum allocation if an applicant was to apply for it and achieve it, and they have in this case achieved that ESTIP bonusing allocation.
Mr. Valtchich.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, that's separate and distinct from the town reserve allocation.
Just in a follow-up, I just want to say congratulations to this builder-developer for exercising the opportunity to utilize that program. There's a reason why the region would have a program such as that in place, and it's not just benefiting to get additional allocation and pull pressure off the infrastructure. So anyway, I just want to say congratulations. This is the first time I've ever seen somebody utilizing that in the time that I've been sitting up here, and so I just thought it was worth noting. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Seeing nothing further, I've got a motion from Counselor Foster. Further motion as presented, all those in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a memorandum regarding a proposed site plan control application for Sharon Vit Estates, which is at the corner, the northwest corner of Leslie and Manor Hampton. May I have a mover, please, for receipt? Councilor Johns, thank you. Mr. Krupnik, would you like to add some meat to the bones of this memorandum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. So as councilors are aware, we receive site plan applications upon the conclusion typically of an official plan and zoning bylaw amendment process. This one was approved by council in May of last year, 2024, and as such, the applicant is coming forward presently to seek site plan approval. I will note that the applicant will be required to obtain servicing allocation from council prior to final approval of their site plan application.
Thank you. Members of committee, any questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilor Johns.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take like 30 seconds and call out, there was a lot of engagement with the public on this particular item, and I thought this summary report of just speaking to the items, so reduced height from eight stories to six stories, increased rear yard setback, reduced gross floor area, decreasing the number of units, reducing the commercial, increased parking space, increased indoor and outdoor amenity space. I just want to say that this process that we have gone through clearly does represent the values and desires of the community, and it's great to see that the process is working. And so thank you to the staff, and thank you to my fellow councilors for all the engagement with the residents on this issue because I do feel this is a win. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I echo those comments. I know that there were some significant changes made through the process, and so I think that's important to note. Just as staff are working through the site plan, I'll just ask that there be some mindfulness towards the proposed Heritage Conservation District that's adjacent, as well as our urban design guidelines. It's a nice-looking building, but it would be better if it were a little bit more heritage look and feel, and that's, I'm sure, something that the community has also been communicating with staff as well. So with that, any further questions or comments? I have a motion that we receive it, moved by Counselor Johns. All those in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. That brings us to the end of our prepared agenda. Mr. Krupnik, did you have anything further to raise at this time?
No, thank you very much. That's the end of my items. Madam Chair.
Okay. Members of committee, anything to bring up? Seeing none, I'll turn the chair back to you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item H on the agenda, it's Parks, Recreation and Culture with myself and the chair. We have about four items on the agenda, and the first one is Parks, Recreation and Culture Report and the Volunteer Appreciation Award. Mr. Carmazin, can you take us through that one, please?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The report provided to council seeks council endorsement for a volunteer appreciation award for the late Bill Potts. The proposed award acknowledges and honors the numerous and meaningful volunteer contributions by Mr. Potts. Staffs available to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Carmazin. Can I have a mover for this, first of all? Lots of takers on that one. I'll take Counselor Leahy. Any questions? Any questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Carmazin, I think this is a very fitting thing to do for what Mr. Potts has done for this community, and it's great recognition. So thank you very much to all involved in making this happen. Okay. If there are no questions on this, it's been moved by Counselor Leahy. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Okay. And on to item number two. Parks, Recreation and Culture Report, Health and Active Living Plaza Construction and Splash Pad Award. Over to you, Mr. Carmazin, to take us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The report prepared for council recommends a construction contract award for the Health and Active Living Plaza eight-acre parkland development to create a town-wide parkland development. I'd like to highlight the design and construction of this project is 100% development charge eligible at no cost to the taxpayer. Parks, Recreation and Culture have worked with finance staff to adjust the development charges funding to be consistent with market values and tender values for construction of this size and scope. There was a significant cost savings with the tender value of over $2 million from the original tender that was performed in 2022, and the revised project budget is well within the DC eligible funding sources that have been identified. Staff also can confirm that the construction contract will support Canadian business. Staffs available to answer any questions that council may have related to the report.
Thank you, Mr. Carmazin. Could I have a mover for this report, please? Counselor Roy DiClemente, thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Chair. My question is with regard to making the distinction very clear for the general public because I've already been addressing questions that the contract is separate from the building. This is addressing the outdoor, the parks and the outdoor amenities, and so I just wanted to confirm that as well as ask for an estimated time of completion.
Mr. Carmazin?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. To answer the first question that the counselor had, it is a separate, completely separate construction contract from the fixed facility construction contract that's currently being performed on-site. And anticipated completion with council approval of the construction award of contract today would be anticipated for the summer of 2026.
Okay. And then, Counselor Roy DiClemente?
I just wanted to acknowledge the expertise that our staff brought to this. And when we were so anxious to get started on the Health and Active Living Plaza, we had the building and the park tendered together. Staff said, no, wait, and this is the outcome of that. And that, I just, I wanted to acknowledge that they understood the business, they understood what they were doing, and they guided us to a savings of $2 million. And I think that deserves celebration. Yes, this is an expensive park, but the community outcomes are tremendous, and the things that we're going to be able to do with that extra money are also going to be impactful for our community. So I wanted to thank Mr. Carmazin and his team. I know most of them are sitting here in the audience. This is a career, a career-transforming project, and I want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Yeah, well said. Any other questions or comments? Oh, sorry. Can see you there, Mr. Valtchich. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I do want to just express thanks to Counsel Roy DiClemente and to committee for acknowledging the work that the staff have done. I also want to just thank Mr. Carmazin and his team. The easy thing to have done in 2022 was just take the tender and run with it. That would have been the easy thing to do. Staff believed, though, although these are not tax dollars, these are development charges, but every dollar matters, and really believed at that point in time that there was potentially better value for money to be had by delaying the decision to proceed. And I'm just delighted that it's worked out the way it has, and appreciate the acknowledgement and the thanks, and want to echo that to our staff team.
Thank you, Mr. Valtchich. Both you and Counselor Roy DiClemente have stolen my thunder because I was going to say very much the same thing, that looking back two years ago, it was a bold decision to hold off, you know? If you remember, prices were going up and up and up, and you made the right call, and that's what, you know, we come to depend on, is your education, your background, your expertise, and the town saved a bit of coin over this. So it's a good news story all around. So it's a good news story all around, and we are creating a world-class facility here that we're all going to be proud of for generations and generations. So I cannot wait to see this thing come to fruition. Unless there's any other comments, I'm going to call the vote on this. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Okay. And on to item number three, keeping along the theme, Health and Active Living Plaza Update. Mr. Carmazin, please go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The memo provided to counsel provides a quarterly update on the construction activity at the Health and Active Living Plaza project for the facility construction. The update provides construction milestones completed and anticipated for the next construction quarter. I'm pleased to report that the project is within the schedule and timeline commitments and well below the approved counsel budget. Town staff have assembled a multidisciplinary team internally to start the planning process for the Health and Active Living Plaza opening event program. Staff are planning a separate report back to counsel and the public to provide an update on the opening event dates, as well as the activities to be provided. Staff's available to answer any questions related to the memorandum provided to counsel.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Carmazin. Can I have a mover for this, please? Counselor Foster? Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Carmazin? Okay, you've been very thorough, Mr. Carmazin. The key takeaways are, we're on track and we're under budget. You've set a high benchmark for the next project that we're going through to keep her under, on track and under budget. So, okay, all those in favor? Okay, approved. Last item on the agenda is Parks and Recreation and Culture Elections Canada Update. Please go ahead, Mr. Carmazin.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The last item prepared for counsel provides an update on the Elections Canada timing and facility requirements for the upcoming federal election. Staff have worked to reschedule any events, programs, or permits that may interfere with the, that will, sorry, that will interfere with the timing and facility requirements for the federal election. Staff's available to answer any questions related to the memo.
Thank you very much. Could I have a mover for this, please? Counselor Carruthers, do we have any questions for Mr. Carmazin? Okay, you're getting off easy today. All those in favor? Carried. All right. Does committee have any questions, further questions for Mr. Carmazin? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to confirm that when we voted on H, item number one, there was part of it that didn't happen to be mentioned, that the recommendations of report PRC 2025-06 be ratified at the council meeting to be held later this afternoon, April 1st, 2025, so that we can pass the endorsement of the Bill Potts Volunteer Legacy Award immediately. So I just wanted to confirm that that will be done in council meeting.
Yep, good catch. Thank you, Counselor Leahy. That is the intent.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Carmazin, do you have anything else for us?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Nothing further at this time. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We're going on to item I of the agenda, and that's Engineering and Public Works. I'm going to hand the chair over to you, Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Chair. We have two items on the agenda today, and I'd like to get a mover for item number one. Counselor Crone, it is the Engineering and Public Works Report, sole source for supply, install, and maintenance of GeoTab's Automatic Vehicle Location Solution for the town's corporate fleet to Daikan Incorporated. And I'd like to ask General Manager Molinari to provide us with some comments on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. This is a procurement report to direct award, a five-year contract for AVL services with the town's current service provider, Daikan. It's in the amount of $180,000, or $18700. The equipment allows the town to track vehicles for insurance and risk mitigation purposes, as well as assist with managing large-scale operations, such as our winter maintenance operations. This allows us to optimize routes, identify any missed areas, and be able to confirm when work is completed. It also is helpful for our reporting purposes for energy use and our green fleet strategy. So Daikan is the only supplier that is compatible with our equipment and our digital solutions, such as our winter dashboard and our AVL software. So they are really the only company that can do it, and we've been very happy and lucky to have them on our team. They provided excellent service with us. We work very well with them, and we're looking forward to working another five years with them. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, General Manager Molinari. Are there any questions for members of committee? Yes, Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you. I noted with interest that this was for our town's corporate fleet, but it excluded fire and emergency services, and I just wondered why, because it seemed to me like this was a really good solution for us to keep tabs on all of our vehicles and not just most of the vehicles. I don't know if that's a Mr. Molinari or a Chief Main Prize question, but...
Through you, Madam Chair. We are happy to expand that system as required, but, you know, fire services likely has other things that they use for the same purpose. I'll pass it over to Chief Main Prize to comment.
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you for the question. So Fire uses our computer-aided dispatch through our service provider in Richmond Hill through a separate tablet command system, which tracks the locations of our trucks. So they are, again, geolocated, lat-long, and the position of them is displayed within our mobile data terminals in the trucks to our phones. So it's a very similar process, but it's compatible with the current software we use with the CAD system that's provided through Richmond Hill Fire.
So does that also apply to our inspection vehicles?
Again, so through the chair, the AVLs are not located on the inspection vehicles that, I'm going to have to defer to Mike. I don't believe that the AVLs system are on the inspection vehicles. All the non-emergency fleet could be added to that system quite easily.
Thank you. Mr. Molinari, through you, Madam Chair. Would this require an extension of that contract, or would this be something that could be encompassed into the existing contract?
Through you, Madam Chair. We could certainly look at that. I'm not certain if Fire's inspection vehicles are part of this either, but that's something that we can look at, and if it makes sense and it's operationally efficient, we can add them to this program. We expanded this to all the town fleet, so it's a natural progression to do this as well, if it makes sense to do so.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add that to the motion, if I may, that we extend it to any other vehicles, including fire inspection vehicles, support staff in general. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? May I ask the mover, Counselor Crone, if he is amenable to the amendment? Yes, okay. Thank you very much. So we will amend that, and we will vote on that. Oh, Counselor Johns, yes?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just one question on the amendment. So if it's looking to expand the fleet, is that going to affect the contract that we're voting on, or is the way that the contract is written that would encompass that? And I'm just clarifying, was the motion to include them or explore the opportunity to include them? So two questions there.
Thank you very much. Perhaps we can ask our clerk, our senior clerk, to put that in writing? Is it possible to put that in writing, so we're all on the same page with what we're voting on? Madam Clerk, yes?
Through you, Madam Chair. We can perhaps put the resolution on the screen, just bear with us for a moment.
Yes, thank you very much. It's always good to have clarity. Thank you. And Counselor Johns, a further question?
Not a further question, just to explain or clarify my two-part question. So the second part of my question was, is it exploring or directing? But the first part of my question was, does that affect the contract based on the outcome? So that would be my question directed through to staff.
Yes, thank you very much. General Manager Molinari, would you like to answer that question? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. So this contract's set up that it's scalable, so we can add more equipment to other vehicles, kind of as we go through our capital program and through the budgets every year. As we acquire new vehicles, we also add them to this program. So it would be, if counsel wishes to move in this direction with the emergency services vehicles, the inspection vehicles, it would be most helpful if counsel just told us that you would like to do that, and we can make that happen.
So, thank you very much, General Manager Molinari. So the amendment is now on the screen, highlighted in blue, and that is what we're voting on with the amendment. All those in favor? Very good, and that is carried. Thank you. And moving on to item number two, we have Joint Engineering and Public Works and Parks Recreation and Culture Report, EPW 2025-08, Regarding Phase 2 Highway 11 and Young Street Multi-Use Path and Lighting Construction Award. Can I have a mover for this, please? Counselor Foster? And General Manager Molinari, would you like to provide us with some updated information on this? Thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. This is actually a fairly significant project with significant dollars associated, and it basically is a continuation of works that have previously been done on Young Street to install systematically multi-use path and lighting along that roadway. So this particular contract is being led by the region. This component that we're asking for award today is the town component of that overall project, and we're just asking for counsel's endorsement so that we can continue with this particular project. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the General Manager Molinari? Yes, Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the first question I had was if 2.8 million is the town's portion of the contract, what's the overall value of the project that the region is undertaking? I think that's an important piece for us to understand, that the region is investing in Young Street and in our town. So that's part one, and I know we've got some money left in the budget for Phase 3. I'm wondering if that's going to be sufficient, if we have a sense of that.
Through you, Madam Chair. I actually don't have the figure for the region's contract, but our portion is a very small portion of their overall project. So if ours is 3 million, theirs would be considerably more, order of magnitude more than our particular project. I can get you the exact number if you'd like, and we will provide that to you. With regards to the next phase, really, it's a matter of seeing where we are with this one, and we will come back to counsel as part of the budget process to ensure that we've got sufficient funds for the next phase when we're ready to do that.
Thank you very much, General Manager Molinari. Are there any other questions from members of council? Seeing none, that brings us to the end of the prepared agenda. Does General Manager Molinari have anything further he'd like to say, perhaps? An update on some of the work that was going on over the weekend and continues to go on with regard to the cleaning up after the storm?
Certainly, and through you, Madam Chair. This was a very significant event. Hydro 1, as comments were made previously, is still working around the clock, restoring power to a number of sites. Our crews are out assisting in the town as we speak, clearing works on the ninth line and other areas, and will continue to do so until power is restored within the town. So appreciate everyone's patience. Everyone's working hard to get that work done, and hopefully, it's completed soon.
Thank you very much, General Manager Molinari. And I skipped a beat. I was anxious to get ahead to hear your comments, but thank you very much for that update. But I should have first asked for a vote, correct, on item number two with regard to the lighting construction awards, so I will now call the vote on that. And all those in favor? Very good, that's carried. So thank you very much for the verbal update, and can I have someone to move the verbal update that General Manager Molinari provided? Thank you very much, Counselor Jones. And can we vote on receiving General Manager Molinari's update? With thanks. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much. So now that brings us to the official end of the prepared agenda, and I'd like to turn back the chair to Acting Mayor Crone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Items J through to N, we don't have any formal reports, but I'm just wondering if I'll give the opportunity to staff if you have anything you'd like to share with us verbally. Seeing none, I will ask committee if you have any questions for staff in these areas. Seeing none, we will move along to item O. Are there any items for other business? None? Very good. Then I will move on to item P for adjournment. Can I have a mover to adjourn? Counselor Johns? All those in favor? Meeting adjourned. Let's take a 10-minute break, and then we'll get into our special council meeting. I want to thank everyone here today. We've been going along at a really nice clip, and it's appreciated. So we'll see you back in 10 minutes.